Good afternoon and welcome to the December 21 Mobile City Planning Commission meeting. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and deliberation. In the public hearing, the agenda item is called, an applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions, if needed, members of the public make their comments to the commission. Reminder that only four people speak for an agenda item and four people against an agenda item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commissioners. And at one minute, we will add, you'll hear a warning bell or a beep asking you to summarize your comments. After an opposition speaker, the applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the podium at the bottom of the stairs, speak into the microphone and provide your name and address for our records, direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all the applications in public hearing, we will then go into deliberation where we discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary but with no input from the audience. Commissioners will then vote on each application and the results of that voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments to resolve those issues, or we will call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. That does not mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal even if it is only slightest appearance of conflict of interest. If we have a recusal, we will have a supernumerary vote in their stead. Reminder that the planning commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the circuit court. The planning commission is strictly a recommending body for rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications and all appeals of the city council decisions are to the circuit court. At this time, please turn your cell phones and electronic devices to silent or vibrate. Commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll go ahead and call the role, myself, Jay Stubbs, president, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Josh Woods, Mr. Harry Brisland, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We do have a quorum, even with recusals already mentioned up here at the chair. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with nine items for December 21. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, we will move on to the agenda. These are all new application items. Number one, northwest corner of Coiman Road and Todd Acres Drive, Jason Schlotz and J.A.G.R. Coonman subdivision. This is a subdivision of one lot, just over 10 acres. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. Are you in agreement with the conditions listed, and there are numbered nine of them? Applicant is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item at the northwest corner of Coiman Road? Am I saying that properly?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Todd Acres Drive. Is there one here to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to number two. A subdivision of one lot, just at .16 acres, 556 Shady Oak Drive, Shady Place subdivision. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Is, are you in agreement with the 10 listed conditions for this subdivision application?
Yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement with those 10 listed conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to number three. Another subdivision, this is at the east side of Halls Mill Road and 1,100 feet south of Pleasant Valley Road extending to the east terminus of Carrigan Drive. This is the Cross Pond subdivision, first addition, re-subdivision of Lot 2. It's two lots, just over five acres. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. Are you in agreement with the nine listed conditions? Applicant is present and in agreement with the conditions listed. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, a reminder that we do have a recusal for Mr. Kirk Matei on number three when it comes to voting. Number four on the agenda, subdivision at 2558 and 2560 Hillcrest Road, Cottage Hill Heights subdivision, a re-subdivision of lots 1 and 2. The proposal is subdivision of three lots, just over two acres. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. Agreement with the eight listed conditions? Applicant is in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right. Moving right along to number five, a subdivision of the south terminus of McNeil Avenue. This is a subdivision of six lots, just under 1 and 1/2 acres. Is the applicant on this application present? Applicant is present. Are you in agreement with the 10 listed conditions of the application?
Yes.
Okay. Give you a second to look because it looks like you're checking those out. Come on down.
Mike Daniels, 5617 Cottage Hill Road. Just wanted a clarification on number one, meet the technical requirements of Section 5C. If someone could tell me what that is. If they don't know, it's okay. I mainly just want to know is it requiring a construction of something or if it's just something on the plat verbal or written?
Hold on. Okay. I'm sorry, should have started reading at the beginning. An initial plat had been submitted and it had all the signature blocks and all the typical subdivision plat data that's required on a subplat. The revised plan that was submitted didn't have any of that on it because you were just trying to show, you know, the additional layout, 5C, is all that technical stuff for a subplat.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Ms. Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing none, we'll move on. Switching gears in the agenda, we'll go to a modification at number six. This is at 6109 Howell's Ferry Road. It's a major modification of a previously approved planned unit development or PUD to allow multiple buildings on a single building site. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. There are 11 listed conditions in the modification application. Are you in agreement with those conditions that are listed? The applicant is in agreement. Do you guys have any questions with respect to this application or its status or anything in there? All right. Any questions or comments from commissioners on this modification at this property? Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there one here to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we will move on to number seven. This is a dual application of a subdivision at 1,300 and 1,310 Schillinger Road South, the Magnolia Point subdivision. The subdivision application is for three lots, just over 34 acres. And then we have a sidewalk waiver to waive the construction of a sidewalk along Schillinger Road South. Applicant present. Go ahead, Mr. Pipes.
Thank you, Casey Pipes, 150 Government Street. This is one that was in the newly annexed areas and we were, we're trying to match up the subdivision lots to the existing uses on the site. There's a mobile home park, there's a self-storage facility, and then there's some retail out there. We're perfectly acceptable to the conditions that were attached to the subdivision comments. On the sidewalk waiver, we asked for a waiver along Greelot and Schillinger. It seemed like the staff report was okay with the Greelot waiver but wanted to reserve the Schillinger Road issue until later. We've already built the retail, you know, along Schillinger and the mobile home park along there. And, you know, the typical comment on an engineering comment is add a note that a sidewalk is required to be constructed along each lot at the time of new development or construction. What, what we have is there's some vacant land on Lot 1, which is where the retail is. The frontage is all built out along Lot 1, but there's some land kind of in the rear of that lot that could support additional, you know, retail space. And we don't want to, to put in a building back there and then trigger a, you know, Schillinger Road sidewalk project that's not going to connect to anything north or south of it. Also, on that Schillinger Road frontage, we've got Alabama Power facilities that are in the right-of-way along with drainage ditches there, particularly at the northern end. There's a mausewoman inside our property line for 20 feet that kind of eats up the area between our parking facility and the right-of-way line and the traveled roadway. So we really don't think there's room for a sidewalk to get crammed in based on where everything's already been built out along Schillinger. And so we request that the sidewalk waiver be granted as to both the Greelot frontage and the Schillinger Road frontage.
Go ahead.
So I, I definitely understand and see what you're talking about. I know there's a dad gum cliff on Greelot Road and I definitely understand that. But I mean, at this moment, you're not, you're not doing anything to, to trigger the sidewalk waiver. I kind of, you know, obviously this was a part of the annexation and, and obviously part of annexation is we have UDC codes and everything as part of, for the city. I mean, I personally, I, I see what you're trying to accomplish and I definitely don't want to cause you or the owners undue, undue work when no work's needed. I just, I have a hard time just getting comfortable doing preemptive waivers because again, you know, once we do it, it's done. And then what, what in 20 years, what are we going to be looking at, you know, for this property usage? And that's, that's just my concern is, is once we do the waiver, I mean, that's, you know, it's kind of said. So that's my only concern with that. I definitely understand and, and, you know, looking at the, you know, the cliff on Greelot Road, should Greelot get expanded or widened, that would probably be part of, part of the road project. I don't think that y'all are going to cut or anybody's going to cut into that cliff and ask for a traffic study to, to add extra access anytime soon. But I just don't feel comfortable doing preemptive waivers because, you know, what, what's the next 10, 15 years look like?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners for Mr. Pipes? Question for staff, I know this is new air, annexed area. In my view of the surrounding properties on the same side of Schillinger, it appears as though we've got other commercial business use. I don't see on this satellite imagery any, I may be wrong, I don't see any sidewalks. Are you aware of any sidewalks along Schillinger? I just see a lot of turn-in and driveways to businesses. I know this is a very busy road.
It is. And the waiver was requested along Greelot, kind of following up with what Mr. Woods said and even Mr. Pipes. There's nothing right now triggering sidewalk construction. It could be based on the information provided in the application and the comments from city engineering, that waiver could be granted. And then the waiver along Schillinger can be tabled so that there's not a denial on the books, you know, going against any kind of application in the future. And then if something is submitted in the future and they need to apply for a sidewalk waiver, they can without a blemish, as it were, of having a denial already on it.
Thank you for that, Ms. Pappas.
Tapling sounds better than denial to, to me. Thank you, Martin.
Any other attendees in the audience? Thank you, Mr. Pipes. Any other one, attendees have support of this agenda item? And again, there's two subdivision and waiver. Anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, reminder for those up here, we will have a recusal and Mr. Kirk Matei on number seven. Going on to number eight on the agenda, 3851 Government Boulevard, The Pines at Heron Lakes subdivision. We have three applications, subdivision and two modifications. Go ahead, Ms. Pappas.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, since the staff reports were published last Friday, there's been some revised information provided in attempt to address the concerns regarding the holdover. Hopefully, each commission member has at your seat these two plans. So we now have the entire boundary of the property to be considered for the major modifications for the planning approval and planned unit development. Sorry. The boundary is the same. If you look at it, the proposed subdivision has also been placed on the plat as well. The one thing you do have now, new considerations provided, the one thing that would be different than what was mentioned on the staff report is based on these revised plans. It is now obvious that one piece of the site is zoned B3. So before that subdivision plat can be recorded, we will need that downzoned to R1. So you have before you now, on your agenda, revised considerations for approval of the subdivision as well as revised considerations for approval of both the major modification to the PUD and planning approval.
Ms. Pappas, will this require the addition of a zoning?
Yes, but that can run subsequent rather than...
So we keep the three? Gotcha. All right. Given all of that, thank you. Is the applicant present? I'm under the impression that everybody's in agreement on the conditions that are listed for the subdivision, the revised, okay? And then the modifications, commissioners have certain things to consider on both of And this is a subdivision, this is total going to 82 lots, as, as stated, just over, just under 19 acres.
Correct.
So is there anyone else who, is there?
The number, correct, the number of lots are not changing. The golf course is common area.
Okay. All right, so it's a subdivision, then a modification to allow multiple buildings on there, and then the modification for the expansion of an existing country club in an R1 single-family residential suburban district. Applicant is present and in agreement with those conditions. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item at The Pines at Heron Lakes? Is there one here to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on to number nine. Dual application of a subdivision at 5041 Range Line Crossing Drive, the Range Long Crossing, Crossing subdivision, Phase 4, re-subdivision of lots 6 through 11. Specific proposal is a subdivision of three lots, just at over 44 acres. And then a modification of a previously approved PUD to allow shared access between those multiple lots. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
On this one, a few clarifications. One, the major purpose, one of the major purposes of this application was to remove Yager Pass as a private street. It will not be a private street per the subdivision regulations. It will be simply an interior access road, just like what you would see with any other apartment complex. So in that regards, we reached out to city engineering and so Comment B under subdivision is no longer applicable. That's where a written legal description of Yager Pass was requested. The next item is concerns regarding traffic engineering comments being placed on the final plat. We've talked with traffic engineering and in terms of their comments, what they want to see on the final plat is the comments regarding driveway number, location, and design. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then anything about any future developer requiring a change to the impact study, you know, an updated impact study.
Okay, so that would be, what would be shown on the final plat would be the comment, traffic engineering approval contingent upon completion of off-site improvements as recommended in the traffic study. Jennifer, what wording needs to be there?
Now, if you'll just, it can be, I was reading through it, trying to give a piece, that the off-site improvements be completed with Phase 1. That if any changes are made, that an impact study will need to be updated. You know, in Phase 2 or Phase 3, if there's any changes to what's shown currently. And then, and then we can do the driveway number size added to that, just the bottom.
Okay, how's this? That off-site improvements be made in Phase 1, any changes made for Phase 2 or Phase 3 may require a new traffic impact study? And then the standard verbiage beginning with driveway number, location, and design?
Yes.
Okay. That was the second item. Then number three, in your staff report, it referenced that there, that when the site was previously approved, it was limited to two signs and not three. That is an error. The site was previously approved by the planning commission allowing three signs. So three signs should still be allowed. So staff proposed clarification and modifications are the deletion of Item B and the engineering comments regarding the legal description of Yager Pass, that only the comments just discussed from traffic engineering be included on the final plat. And three, that the site is allowed three signs as previously approved.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Is the applicant present? So we heard all of that. And then you guys on the subdivision, want to make sure you're in agreement with those Question from the applicant is, will she be able to see the conditions revised?
Okay. The conditions as referenced in the staff report aren't going to change.
Those are the 10 listed. What we just discussed were...
What will be in the letter of decision. So in the letter of decision, let's kind of go through.
Assuming passage.
Yes. All right, so under subdivision, on number six, you have in the consideration, compliance with all engineering comments noted in this staff report. If, as recommended, Comment B would be stricken. And that would be in consideration number six. Number seven, placement of a note on the final plat stating, and then the traffic engineering comments as follows, and it would be what we just discussed.
Okay, that's what we just want to be sure that there's clarification on because we would not want...
Listen, name an address.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That was on me. I'm just, I'm just going, yes, name an address for the records.
Melissa Hadley with Gable Mills in Kewood and Daphne Alabama on behalf of the client, Cathcart Properties. So the way that the condition is, is worded is that all of, everything that's in the traffic comment has to be repeated on the plat. And that is an extremely lengthy paragraph with a lot of things that we're not agreeing to and now that have been revised. So we, we need to have like crystal clarity on what needs to be on that plat.
So between traffic and staff, they just went through that.
That's great.
Clearly, we don't have a printer here that we can put those in writing, but it will be given on, in our deliberation, it will be specifically noted.
Okay, so the three, the three traffic comments, if this is correct, just so that we're, we're just making sure we're all on the same page, that are going to go on the plat will be limited to, number one is, I'm sorry, let me get back to where I wrote, made my notes. All off-site improvements will be made with Phase 1. So the only issue I have with that is that we don't show any phasing on the plat. So the, the plat is just the three overall lots. So could that be misconstrued in some way? So this is the problem of just translating comments onto a record plat.
Is Phase 1 contained on Lot 1?
Yes.
We can say with the development of Lot 1.
The second note then would be future changes on other, so this is, you can see where we have a little bit of issue and we're just trying to work through this.
Yeah, we'll say Lot 2 and Lot 3.
Okay. Any changes to Lots 2 or 3 may trigger a revised traffic impact study.
Yes.
So we'll be sure to use the word "may," right? That's, okay. And then the third lot will, the third note, excuse me, would be what has been written here, driveway number, size, location, design, or subject to the approved plat. Okay, we're, we're fine with those things. Is that correct? Thank you.
Ms. Hadley, thank you.
One question, on that second one, just so everybody's on the same page. Are we saying they would need to do a traffic impact study if they make a change to the second, the Phase 2 and Phase 3, or when they start, or, yeah?
Just that it's possible.
When that, yeah, it's possible, depending on, depending on the size of the change, if there is... if there is any at all. If, when they bring Lot Two and Lot Three for development, it may trigger an additional, or, or an update to the existing traffic impact study if there are major changes over what the study was originally performed for.
So, the study was done for all three phases?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And this, and the study included the three connection points that we're making, so we haven't made any substantive changes like that. The types of changes that happen along those, like Lot One, Two, Three, sometimes dictate where utilities stub out based on phasing that makes sense for construction. So, the, the changes would be really relatively minor, wouldn't be anything that we would anticipate at this point being substantive.
If you're comfortable with that language, Traffic seems comfortable with that language.
Yes, we are for the plat. Yes, sir.
Mr. Stubbs, can I ask a question of Traffic? So, okay, so we got the survey, see the comments, and we're talking about this area being overtaxed at certain hours, only doing, using one entrance, I believe, as a, in case of an emergency. I know from personal, I mean, that's my, all these, even though it's in District Four, I know from personal that, I mean, that's a mess. That whole area is a mess. It's a terrible mess. I know we got an Aldott issue, I know we got, we, we, we don't have a right-of-way enough to try to help people off that. I mean, are we, we, we really sure that, that at this point, we want to go ahead and, and just go ahead and put the "may" in there? Because I know once Phase One comes online, once Phase Two, Phase Three, I mean, that's, that area's going to see a lot more traffic. I don't know, I mean, I mean, we always got the "may," but should there be a "will do" or "will have" a traffic survey?
Well, their traffic impact study covered all three phases, as it is. And you'll, and there were even, like, I think even in our thing, we said, you know, there's a comment about full build-out, that Range Line Crossing going to a 17-minute delay.
Yeah.
So, they, they've committed a full traffic impact study at this point. Halls Mill...
It's a mess.
Is, is probably, needs to be addressed by the city, state, to do some additional work out there to alleviate some of, it's not, right now, it functions fine, but it's causing the side streets to not function fine. And so, they're bringing these developments in, you know, it's a big swath of land, stuff, stuff are going to happen. The traffic is really concentrated from the south of this, kind of that Grand Bay area, or really the west, I guess you would say, the west. So, a lot of the traffic's coming in off Range Line, coming in off Interstate. It's not coming from the east, it's not coming Halls Mill, Demetropolis, Highway 90.
Okay.
They're, they're attracting a lot of traffic out of that Cran Bay, further Theodore area from the Interstate, and that's the way they're wanting to return back. So, we, possibly, the city, state combination needs to look at improvements to the public streets in that area that could help alleviate some of the congestion that's happening backing up the side streets. Right now, Halls Mill operates at a acceptable level of service, but it's to the detriment of the side streets.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, the way we have it right now, if there's a substantial change, traffic engineering is going to be the one who says, this is, this triggers a new traffic study. Perfect, thanks.
Ms. Hadley, I'll ask if there was anyone, anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? For it, any, you want to make any further comments for it?
This is just for the plat, right?
This is for the entire agenda item, which includes the subdivision and the modification.
Okay, so for, as far as the PUD modification goes, so we do have, you know, another whole set of conditions, and in those conditions is some discussion about the, what you just brought up about the road being turned for emergency only. So, if we did, if that were to be considered, this would force all the traffic back up through, again, to the point at Lowe's Drive, which actually exasperates the traffic. So, and given the fact that the road is already used by Aldi traffic, to try to further limit it would be limiting other uses outside of our PUD. So, we, we are not in agreement with that, that portion of the traffic comment. And because, like we said, in the original traffic study, all three driveway connections were made and examined and studied. So, what changed from the original PUD to what this PUD is, is that southerly building that you see there shaped like an L? The drive to connect to Range Line Crossing used to go to the east, and it was moved over to the west in order to utilize the existing drive to make less traffic congestion, and it's already in line with an existing intersection. So, that L-shaped building was redesigned, and that road was redesigned along the whole westerly side at the request of the Planning Commission and the previous traffic engineer at our original approval in August of 2022, if you recall. So, this amended PUD that you see now, that's really the main change, has been that connection. There were a few other changes to where pond locations were as we got into final design with engineering, but really, that was the main change, and this was done at the city's request, and really, was, made a lot of sense to utilize that existing drive. And so, it would be actually sort of going back and turning the, turning it back to come in now and say with it, to be limited to emergency access only for the property. And that would also preclude the residents of the, the community that we're creating from being able to just easily access Aldi or the coffee shops and things like that, and that kind of goes against the nature of a PUD. We're trying to increase connectivity and increase people's ability to use adjoining sites without the use of their car. If they can't go out that entrance, then they have to get in their car and go up to Halls Mill Road down, and then back around just to get down to Starbucks or something. So, allowing that connection to remain really makes the most sense for traffic congestion, improved livability for the community.
I'll ask Traffic to comment.
No, that, that connection can be opened. I think we discussed it in, in the previous meeting, but part of the reason it was originally put on there was that failing level of service on Range Line Crossing. Range Line Crossing can't handle any additional traffic, but cross-traffic does need to take place between the apartment complex and the businesses to the, to the west of them, and keep them off of the main road.
Right. So, we'd like to keep that road open and not be restricted by emergency use only.
So, a question for staff, as I understand it, then modify, then the plan you developed in modification, third paragraph in, do we need to make any changes there? Where it reads, it should be noted, the traffic engineering comments will require a change to the site plan and how Range Line Crossing Drive is accessed.
I think the, the least confusing way to do this, if that's possible, all of this, like what you just referenced, is in the report. A lot of the traffic engineering comments are simply that, comments, they're informational. I think the best thing, if the commission sees fit, to approve the subdivision and recommend approval of the modification to the PUD, that any considerations regarding traffic engineering comments are strictly those conditions that we discussed. It would only be off-site improvements for Lot One are required, any changes made for Lots Two may require a new traffic impact study, and then the standard typical driveway number, location, and design. So, that way, the conditions the commission is affixing or recommending are clear, everything else is simply on record as information.
Ms. Hadley, is that okay?
Yes, yes, and we've been working with staff pretty closely, trying to get this all resolved, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, August 22, when we first, this is the first, that's the first time we saw this, right?
That's the first time you saw this.
Right. And in that meeting, we didn't, we didn't require, I remember Nick talking about lining it up with the intersection. We didn't say it was going to be emergency access only in that meeting, did we?
No.
I don't remember that, is why I'm asking.
I'm at the point I can't recall specifics with assurity.
It was a million years ago.
The one thing that I can recall is there was a lot of discussion, and I believe both a prior applicant for this project and the council member were advocating for some type of cross-access from the north to the south, and there was discussion on, you know, the, the east-west location of that north-south connection. That's as much detail as I can recall.
Okay, that's more than I remember, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners?
And forgive me, I guess Lowe's Drive, that is just, that's the back of the, of the Lowe's development, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and there's not...
It is a public street.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And just to also, to reiterate, there's been no change to the number of units, the number of buildings. That one building did have to be redesigned because of the change in the location of the road, but the number of units have stayed the same, same number of garage units, all, all of those things, it's, it's been the same. As far as pond locations and common areas, they moved around a little bit when we started doing the engineering. For example, up in the northeast corner, we have that larger pond now, and there's quite a bit of topography in that area. So, we had to take, there was originally shown a little pond at the entrance at Halls Mill that would be a little bit more aesthetic, but then also turned out to not work for stormwater, and we needed larger space in the back. So, those are really the only changes that have been since the previous, and previously and currently approved PUD to what you see now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this agenda item? All right, we will now close the public hearing session and move back into deliberation for agenda item number one. Subdivision northwest corner of Cooman? And Todd Acres Drive, one lot, over 10 acres, nine conditions listed, applicant is present and in agreement with those conditions listed, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. Number two, 556 Shady Oak Drive, Shady Place subdivision, one lot, .16 acres, applicant was present with 10 listed conditions and in agreement, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Kirk Maté will recuse himself on number three. We still have a quorum for this agenda item at the east side of Halls Mill Road and south of Pleasant Valley Road extending to the east terminus of Carrigan Drive, subdivision of two lots, just over five acres, applicant is present with nine listed conditions and in agreement, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. We'll welcome Mr. Maté back up for agenda item number four. At 2558 and 2560 Hill Crest Road, the Cottage Hill Heights subdivision, a subdivision of three lots, just over two acres, applicant is present with eight listed conditions, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. Number five, subdivision at the south terminus of McNeil Avenue, subdivision of six lots, just under one and a half acres, applicant, Mr. Daniels, is present, had clarification on the conditions, is in agreement with those conditions, entertainment, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion for the subdivision passes. Number six on the agenda, modification at 6109 Howells Ferry Road, modification of a previously approved PUD to allow multiple buildings on a single-building site. The applicant is present in agreement with the 11 listed conditions, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion for the modification passes. Number seven. Subdivision and a sidewalk waiver at 1300 1310 Schillinger Road South, we will excuse Mr. Maté for recusal. We still maintain a quorum for this agenda item. We will take them separately. First, the subdivision, 10 listed conditions, three lots, 34 and a half acres, applicant is present and in agreement with those conditions.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes for the subdivision. On the sidewalk waiver, the applicant is present, made comments towards the activity on the property not requiring at this time construction of any sidewalk. I'm going to assume, presume we will go for Greelot and Schillinger here, or do we just want to include Schillinger? And if we move it to a tabled format, how would you like that wording?
Why don't you make a motion on Greelot, on the sidewalk waiver, proceed through that, and then do the same along Schillinger?
I'll make a motion, proceed with the Greelot Road sidewalk waiver.
We have a properly moved and seconded sidewalk waiver along Greelot. Any discussion among council members?
Yeah, so, so we are waiving the sidewalk requirement for Greelot.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the Greelot sidewalk waiver passes.
I'd like to make a motion to table the Schillinger Road South on sidewalk waiver.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for a tabling of the Schillinger Road sidewalk waiver. Any discussion among commissioners? Clarification from the applicant? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to table sidewalk waiver on Schillinger Road. That motion passes. Moving on to number eight, we'll welcome Mr. Maté back up, getting his steps in today. Subdivision and dual, two modifications at 3851 Government Boulevard, the pines at Heron Lakes subdivision. We have a subdivision of 82 lots, just under 19 acres. Then we have the modification of a PUD for multiple buildings, and then we have a modification of expansion of the existing club in an R1 single-family residential suburban district. We will take these separately subdivision. Applicant is present and in agreement with the 19 listed conditions of that subdivision.
I have a question. So, you said rezoning comes later, so we can just focus on the subdivision now?
Correct.
That's correct, it's recommended consideration number one under the subdivision.
Okay, I would move to approve subdivision, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion for the subdivision passes. Modification, the second one, to allow previously approved PUD for multiple buildings on single building site.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Third, expansion of existing country club in an R1 single-family residential suburban district, entertain a motion.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion for that modification on that building passes. Number nine. Subdivision and modification dual application at 5041 Range Line Crossing Drive, the Range Line Crossing subdivision. The subdivision will be three lots, just over 44 acres, and then the modification of a previously approved PUD to allow shared access between multiple lots. Lots of discussion here. I will now entertain a motion if everybody has their notes. entertain a motion if everybody has their notes ready.
Chairman, I'll take a stab at it. I'll move to approve subject to staff recommendations with revised engineering and traffic comments and allowing three signs as previously approved for the subdivision.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Everybody heard? I'm just looking at the applicants. Everybody heard? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes for the subdivision. Onto the modification. Entertain a motion there.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, but revisiting allowing the connection to range line crossing.
There was a mod, there was a request to go back to the, to allow the connection to the range lines crossing.
I think he was referencing the sign count from two to three.
Is that what you, what are you clarifying?
No, I, I thought there was, if I was following it correctly, I thought there was a request to revisit allowing the connection to range line crossing drive.
What they proposed has it.
Okay, okay, well, then I'm fine, that's, that's...
What they proposed have it, has it. There were some traffic engineering comments regarding concerns about that.
Okay.
However, the notation on that site plan would be the same as the subdivision would be off-site improvements in, for Lot One. Any changes made for Lots Two and Three may require the traffic in, uh, modified traffic impact study, driveway location.
Then that motion is just a clean move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
As amended.
As amended. But, but we do need to have the signs, the signs in the...
Signs should be three, please.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
We have a, a motion for the approval of the modification inclusive of three total signs. And that has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the modification passes. I'll ask if staff has any further business for today, December twenty-one?
I hope y'all have a wonderful Christmas and safe and happy New Year.
On behalf of the Planning Commission, thank you for all the commissioners and their service for this calendar year. We'll see everybody after first of the year. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.